Okay, so now we are, now I'm calling this meeting to order, so the public meeting to order. Um, uh, do I have a bookstore to establish, it's now six oh two, do I have a motion to establish the agenda?
We establish the agenda as well.
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes by five to zero. This meeting is now in order and in session and we have Director Janie Upton, Laurie, Suzie, and myself here in person and Director Din via Zoom. And it is active, thank you. Uh, we have no public input tonight, correct? Um, so moving on to the first item, which is superintendent report.
Hello, we're going to do a couple of items on the superintendent report tonight, we're going to start with kind of become our usual school opening COVID update for the board. Um, our dashboard continues to be updated daily and we're going to have Nurse Carla Rimmer joining us here in a bit to go over some of the questions that have come up recently. Also want to point out that the FAQ, which is found on the page for the COVID response, is also constantly updated, it was updated twice in the last couple of weeks based on questions that either come to the board or come to staff, sometimes they're generated via a news article and so people have questions, so we're updating that frequently, so please point people to the FAQ on our, our website. We are going to talk about some contact tracing, we have some good news to go along with that, that Fred will share with you, we're going to talk about where we are with testing because we know there's some questions with that and also vaccination and we did receive a department health update, so we'll let the board know any of those pieces that will change anything that we are, have been doing, so Fred, do you want to start and then turn it over to Carla? There's Carla now.
Thank you Superintendent Kloski, we do, we want to provide you with just an overall update, especially as we have, you know, as we're approaching October and I think the school year is officially no longer new, but we're all settling in and so uh, we do have Carla Rimmer on the call today, I did want to just highlight some good news. We applied for a grant through the Health Commons Project, that's during Learn to Return and others. Now, we asked for additional funding to support staff, um, so that we can continue to conduct contact tracing uh, at our highest ability level and we were granted a grant that will provide enough FTE to hire another nurse. And so we'll be adding a nurse for the rest of this school year. The staffing that we're working out right now is whether or not we'll be hiring someone who's going to be kind of our contact COVID tracing expert or whether or not we're going to use one of our existing nurses to do that and then backfill their position with a nurse, so that's some good news on that front as we continue to work extremely hard to mitigate the transmission of COVID in our buildings and equally as important, keep them open, keep them operating, keep our students learning. So with that, Carla, I'm going to turn it over to you, I'll bring up the slides and I'll drive as you're talking uh, and then call me in where you need me, but I want to give you a chance to talk about the big picture of what we're seeing in our school district right now, so with that, I'll turn it over to you and give you one second to pull up the slides.
No problem, uh, thanks Fred and thank you to the board for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I do want to also take this opportunity to further thank you for, um, I guess promoting and having nurses in every school building, we are one of the few districts in the region and even the state that have a full-time nurse in every school building right now and because of that, we have been able to do good work and I think work hard to keep schools open while also keeping our community as safe as possible. Um, and so tonight I just wanted to give you an overall update about where things stand, where we're headed and answer any potential questions that you have. And to our community members that might be listening as well, I just wanted to start out reminding us all what our goals were for coming back to school this year and first and foremost, we wanted to return to in-school, school learning and we wanted to do that and make sure that all students would that want to be in person would be in person and do that as safely as possible and we wanted to do that with minimal interruptions to learning as well as continuing with our mission of supporting the whole child. Um, as we did last year, we continued to layer levels of mitigation, we know from Public Health, we know from the CDC, we know from DOH that when we layer mitigation, um, when we have layered mitigation measures like requiring face coverings for all students, doing physical distancing to the best of our abilities, this year, um, because we have more students back in buildings, we aren't able to keep kids six feet apart at all times, but we do that with three feet and masks on throughout most of the day. We have maximized the ventilation in all of our buildings, we're continuing reminding students about respiratory etiquette, hand washing, staying home when you're sick, um, and we have good cleaning protocols in place. Just like we did last year, we are continuing to work with families and staff members when they test positive or have students that test positive for COVID. Our requirements are that, uh, those that test positive for COVID stay out of school a minimum of 10 days. We know that sometimes if people have high viral loads or they've had significant symptoms like fever, cough, things that are prolonged, some people may have to stay out of school even longer than 10 days and that's why we're following up with families, we're checking in with our staff on how they're doing and what their symptoms are and then we make a determination whether or not at the 10-day mark, can they come back to school or work? Or do we need to have them stay home longer because symptoms are lingering that may make them contagious for a longer period of time than 10 days? I, I do want families to know and understand this, um, because this has come up in a recent conversation I had with one of our families. Public Health does not require a negative COVID test once you've tested positive to return back to school. And that is because our PCR testing is extremely sensitive, it is possible that someone that tests positive for COVID may have detectable viral load for up to three months. They've come up with this window of, for the majority of people that you can return after 10 days. We are not seeing transmission in our schools with kids that, or staff that have come back after, after their 10-day window. So I just wanted to make that point clear and if you guys have follow-up questions for me related to that, I can um, quarantine this year, we have made some changes to quarantine because what we saw from last year was that it's really hard for most of our families to stay out of school for 14 days. It is hard to manage childcare, it is hard to maximize learning in a remote setting for long periods of time and so we have accessed the guidance given to us from Public Health that we are able to use a shortened quarantine window of seven days with a negative COVID test on day five, so right now what we're doing with families is if, um, your child is considered a close contact and your child is not vaccinated, they are required to stay home seven days after, um, they have had contact for this, for seven days from the point of last day of contact with the student and then they must test on day five with a negative test in order to return. Um, and then if anything changes or someone tests positive that was in a cohort of students, it may reset return to school timelines for students that may be close contacts with an additional student, so we are monitoring that very closely, we are communicating widely with families when that happens and trying to do our best to support people while they're out of school and, and not able to access education while in person. We are sending, in my opinion, robust communications, um, I, but I will acknowledge that we even get questions when we think we're trying to make things as clear as possible, so we definitely want to hear from you, if you're not understanding the information that we, we are providing, definitely feel free to reach out to either your nursing staff, myself, or the administrator in your building. And then the final step in this is to then communicate with Public Health, we're communicating with them along the way, but then we have to do the reporting and the paperwork component, thanks Fred. Um, we've had a lot of questions from our community about what we are doing from a testing implementation measure because there's been guidance out and, uh, recommendations around testing in schools. So I'd like to just provide a little bit of history around that, um, when we initially were contacted by, um, Health Commons last year, they offered us, the first choice they offered us was PCR testing with results that would come 48 or more hours later after, um, after they were taken and that seemed like a really long time, particularly in our county because we know that when our staff and students are accessing the King County Testing Centers, results are often back in 24 hours or less and so, um, initially with Health Commons last year, we didn't, we didn't move in that direction, then they offered us the rapid test. So we are currently implementing rapid testing for students, we do know there is a possibility for false positives and false negatives. Um, and so if in certain situations, we may ask for follow-up PCR testing, so the ways we are using our current Bionics now is, um, first and foremost diagnostically, so if a staff member or student that is on campus begins experiencing COVID symptoms while at work or school, we can offer families the opportunity to do a Bionics rapid test, the results are back in 15 minutes. Um, so far, uh, we've probably run roughly, I mean, we're, we've probably run hundreds this school year just because we're also doing some screenings with diagnostics, but we've only picked up one positive case of COVID with our Bionics now, um, and that was in an asymptomatic person that had really not spent any time on campus. Um, the other way that we are using, um, the testing is in our test to stay format, so in some circumstances, vaccinated people, um, may, uh, like, I'm going to use myself as an example, I'm vaccinated, someone in my home is COVID positive, they aren't, but I'm just using it as a hypothetical. If, if they were, uh, the guidance is that if I can isolate from that person and I'm not their primary caregiver, I can continue to come to work. But there is also a potential that I might have COVID and so what can I do to make sure that I'm keeping our community safe while also, um, doing my job for the district and so I would be able to do rapid testing until I can get my PCR test every day. And then, um, then from there, I, if my test is continue to be negative and my PCR is negative, then I would continue to monitor myself for symptoms and keep working as long as I can, assuming I'm isolating from the person in my home that is, uh, positive. We also have the opportunity to screen for outbreak testing, um, again, with the Bionics now, it's not completely written liable and can give a false negative, so we can offer it to people that have been close contacts of those at school, but if it's negative, if the rapid test is negative, we are requiring a follow-up PCR test because PCR is more specific and sensitive for screening out any, um, low viral load or asymptomatic. We, we actually had one case this year where we had a person who had had a close contact exposure. They were in a screening protocol with the rapid test, they tested negative on a Monday with the rapid test and then subsequently the next day tested positive for COVID by PCR, um, because they, the rapid didn't pick it up or their viral load became higher that next day, we, we don't know, but we are requiring a higher level of testing for close contacts and symptomatic, uh, people that have a negative rapid test. And then the fourth way we're in the district right now that we're using our, our Bionics now is to, um, test any of our unvaccinated athletes that are in high-contact sports. We've implemented that so far with our football team, uh, water polo for fall. And it's just a screening test, um, and the reason that we're saying that they can do the rapid test is one, Public Health allows for that, for frequent testing, as well as, um, it's really not practical to think that the athletes who go to school all day and then end up having to practice for another two hours can even get to an external testing site to, um, do testing, so we are doing a small number of students that are, are not vaccinated in those subsets. Um, I might have just said all of this, Fred, without, uh, going through this, so, um, let's see, I did the diagnostic now, we talked about the requirement for follow-up testing. Um, I did the test to stay, oh, and that, um, I think I went over all that, yep, outbreak testing, we talked about that, okay, next slide, sorry, jumped ahead on you. Our additional groups, um, oh, and then I just wanted to answer kind of one of the final questions with the why currently we're not doing yet widespread screening and surveillance testing, um, at Mercer Island. What we were, we base this current decision on a number of factors, but the first and foremost is that we are seeing low numbers of COVID occurring in our school setting. Um, we are also a community with extremely high vaccine rates. Um, we're also seeing low transmission in areas when we have layered mitigation, there, there have been some cases of breakthrough potential, um, transmission, but I'm going to talk more about that in a little bit. Uh, and then, um, we are doing the diagnostic testing and we're requiring the follow-up more specific test if the test is a negative. And our community has very easy access to the PCR testing. Unless of course someone doesn't have transportation to get off the island, we recognize that could be a barrier for some families and we and staff and we work with them in, in those scenarios to figure out a, a better plan of action, but, um, locally we have quick and easy access to both Bellevue College and the, uh, South Seattle location Soto on Sixth Avenue. Families are sometimes able to schedule an appointment, but it's not required and you can actually just go drive there, get in line and get a COVID test, uh, at least, uh, six out of seven days a week, I believe, from nine to five, uh, for the Bellevue location and nine to five thirty for the, um, Soto location. Um, okay, so I made this slide at probably this afternoon and so, um, some of the data has recently been updated. We do, we have had 15 cases of COVID reported since August 27th in our community. Um, we do believe that at least one of the cases was determined to be most likely transmitted at school. Um, because we couldn't identify any other outside source of a potential COVID exposure in that case. And, um, the contacts were pretty close, the most recent case we're still investigating. There is a possible that it may have, uh, occurred in a transmission at school, but we've also received some information that the person that's tested positive may have also been exposed to someone experiencing symptoms of COVID in the out, in the outside community, so at this point, it's too early to call, we may never be able to call this case, but, um, I just wanted to be transparent with, uh, the board in what we're seeing and what we're doing. Um, so far, okay, 88, so now I'm going to probably have to add, I think we're up to 90 close contacts of our reported, uh, COVID cases this year and so far, um, two people have subsequently tested positive for COVID during a quarantine period. Or even not quarantined, but considered a close contact, but because they were vaccinated, didn't have to quarantine. But just trying to clarify that point. Um, let's see, what we're hearing from families is, uh, and staff are that, uh, those that are testing positive, symptoms have been mild, so I'm encouraged by that, we aren't and have yet, yet not had any hospitalizations to, uh, related to this, um, many of the symptoms reported, people are saying they felt like they just had their regular allergies or they had a mild sore throat or possibly a low-grade fever. Um, in a few cases, we've heard the loss of taste or smell, um, and in some, no symptoms at all. Some of our people that have tested positive for COVID, maybe we're just getting a screening test for an activity they needed to participate in and didn't even realize that they, um, were positive. And we are committed to continuing to evaluate our testing protocols with the resources that we have and if our trends change, we may, uh, down the line, look at further screening, um, or surveillance. Great news, I did check our web, the King County website today, we do continue to see that 94% of eligible residents, um, ages 12 and up have received both doses of COVID vaccine on our island, we should feel very grateful for that. Um, because while, um, we're seeing some breakthrough cases of COVID in vaccinated people, again, the symptoms are, uh, pretty mild. And then, um, I did want to let you know, I have a meeting scheduled next week with Public Health as well as Costco to start planning for our ages five through 12 vaccine clinic that we will roll out as soon as the FDA approves the vaccine for this age group, so we're going to put some tentative dates on the calendar based on what we're hearing in, um, public health forums regarding the FDA timeline around that.
So our nurses for a really tenacious start to the school year and a absolute commitment to the health and safety of our students, both during the school day and outside of the school day sometimes, uh, when we're working with families, uh, and students, but the ultimate goal is, as you pointed out Carla, is, um, keep our students, our staff and our community safe, keep our schools open uh, and continue to work together as an entire team, so I'll turn it over to the board.
Carla, I just wanted to, um, first of all, say thank you for that, that very thorough report, um, second of all, to just ask about, about the, the staying home seven days thing, so if you're a close contact, you're not vaccinated, you stay home for seven days and you have a COVID test on day five, is that a PCR test that's required or is that one the screening test?
It's PCR.
Okay, that was my own question, thank you, anyone else?
Um, and I, I did just want to interject, sorry, I don't even know if this is a process I'm allowed to interject once I'm asked a question, but we also are asking and continuing to ask families to monitor, so even though the, the quarantine is short and it doesn't mean we stop monitoring for symptoms of COVID, you have to keep in mind that you've been exposed and if any symptom of COVID develops, then you keep the student home or staff stays home and then they test again. Because when you test for COVID, it just means that you don't have COVID that day, it doesn't mean you won't get COVID down the line. Because you may develop COVID anywhere from two to 14 days after exposure.
Thank you, Deborah.
Um, don't read into my question because I don't know actually how I feel about it, but has there been any talk, um, if the numbers increase of requiring student athletes, if they want to participate in athletics, that they must be vaccinated?
Fred, do you want to take that one or did you want me to answer?
I can start and then you, maybe you have some information as well from the conversations, um, there, I, based on the information that I have and, and then listening, I have not heard anything, even though it's an extracurricular activity and not part of, um, the basic educational school, school day, I have not heard any movement right now talking about participation in athletics tied to vaccinations, um, in any of the conversations I've been in. But has anything with the nurses, I know you meet with the nurse cohort or the consortium, uh, in the Puget Sound region, anything different on your end?
We are not hearing anything different on our end, um, as per usual, uh, Washington DOH sets the requirements for students related to what's required for school and we haven't heard yet that they're going to set any additional requirements for participation for athletes at this time.
That's it for questions? Tam, do you have anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you Carla.
Thank you Carla and we will make sure that the slide deck gets posted on the COVID response web plan, we are trying to keep everything dated on there so people know when things can add it and what to update, so that slide deck will get added as well. The next piece we wanted to, um, talk to the board about, we've mentioned this at the last board meeting during the superintendent report, is our enrollment, we know that last year it was a great concern because of, um, schools not being able to open because of COVID and so, um, we had always known we were going to have a enrollment decline. It occurred at a much faster rate last year, so on the consent agenda tonight, just for the board to receive is the enrollment report due September 7th, um, so Ty is going to kind of talk through that with you and give you some of the the impacts that that's going to have because as you can see on the report, it doesn't match what we projected. Some things came out as we anticipated kindergarten, first grade, the other things didn't, and we do have some really preliminary data that, um, is giving us some explanation of the why, Ty?
So as you can see, excuse me. So as you can see, on the enrollment report and as Superintendent Kloski mentioned, that our enrollment is coming in under what we have projected. Um, the last few meetings that we had talked, um, been talking about enrollment, um, we have been working through a backlog of registrations and withdrawals, um, paperwork and now that we've been through the first few days of school, first few weeks of school, we've really got a more solid number. While we're looking at, while these are still, it's still a more solid look, it's still fairly preliminary. Even as early as this afternoon, or as late as this afternoon, um, we had a, uh, update to the enrollment um, with about another five FTE that we added, um, into the mix. Currently where we're sitting at, uh, we projected one, 4,116.8 FTE. Uh, we are currently sitting at 3,931.74 FTE, so we are below projection by 185. Um, you can see below that there's the running start numbers, we haven't really started tracking running start yet, they haven't gotten that far into the enrollment process and running start is just a separate bucket of money, um, that, uh, we're able to claim against, so it's not really a significant, it's not really a loss to us at this point, um, if we were to see less than the 48 FTE of running start students, we might, we might start seeing some funding loss, but at this point, we just haven't, um, we haven't gotten all the paperwork for the running start yet. So when we're looking at the enrollment, the real number that we need to be thinking about is that 185, um, below projections. As we've been talking about enrollment with, uh, our student data coordinator, Giovanna Koczewski, Koczewski, excuse me. Um, we've been looking at, um, why they've been withdrawing and, uh, Deputy Superintendent Rendell has been sending out a survey to those families that have withdrawn, um, we've gotten a fair number back uh, and as well as when they, uh, process the withdrawal paperwork, the registers also take a look at what some of the reasons why we've lost students. Uh, I took a look at it this morning, um, out of the students that left the district, starting at the end of the last school year, so at the end of June, all the way up through today, 66% of the families that have left have moved off the island. So either to other communities in King County or all over the state, um, we've got a small percentage that have uh, even moved out of the country, um, to, to other locations. So 66% of the, the families that have moved off the island, which really goes to to the considerations that we've talked about for the last several years and when talking about enrollment projections is the cost of the housing market. You know, take the cost of the housing market and you combine that with the opportunity and ability that a lot of families now have uh, in terms of, uh, flexible work locations and arrangements, being able to work remotely from anywhere. We're seeing a lot of families, um, leave and find cheaper locations and, and other places to live. Uh, another thing to note is that, uh, 15% of the families that have left have gone private and, uh, about another 10% uh, have gone to either homeschool or virtual online programs. So it's the, by and large, the vast majority are families that have left, um, for other housing locations. So that's, though, those are some things that we do need to be considering, consider and, and think about. Um, what it means for fiscal impact, um, at this point, it's just preliminary projections, uh, we do need to remember that the official that the official count isn't until October, uh, and OSPI doesn't adjust our funding model until January, when they start taking a look at the annual average enrollment from the beginning of the school year in September until January. Um, so at this point, we're just taking a look Um, so at this point, we're just taking a look at back of the napkin math and what it means in terms of revenue impact. And right now, the hundred and eighty-five students, we're looking at about one point six million in terms of revenue impact. As we move closer and we finish closing the books, um, we're, we're working on starting year end right now. Um, so as we close the books and we have a firm impact of where we ended the fiscal year and where we're starting this current twenty-one dash twenty-two school year, um, we'll have a better picture of, of where we're going to be looking in terms of fiscal impact. Um, so there's, there's a lot of things that we still need to consider. And a lot of this information is still preliminary, but those are some things that we've, we really wanted to, to, to highlight. Are there any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for bringing this to the board. Um, you know, I think we've, we've done a really good job of being transparent around the COVID dashboard, our budget and our enrollment. And it's very important that we share good news and bad news on a, on a very timely basis. So I, I, I think the board really appreciates, uh, this style of, of heads up around what's going on. It is, it is, it is disappointing to see the enrollment down. Um, and we all knew that. And I, I'll repeat again, as a board, we did say last time, let's, uh, be aggressive in hoping enrollment comes back so that we didn't have to deal with layoffs and other things as a result of those predictions. So, you know, there, there's some culpability in this situation with the board as well, uh, in terms of our prediction. So I, I, I get that. Um, so thank you very much for, for sharing this with us. Uh, regarding the survey that was done, you think that survey, the returns of the survey are a representative sample? Um, there are, we're down about two hundred kids. How many surveys were returned that these are represented?
So the numbers that Ty gave you were actually from our student information system from Skyward. Because when someone is unenrolled, which happened really after school starts, and we don't see them, their registrars at each of the school get that information from the family when they're unenrolled. Like, oh, we moved to Spokane or we moved to Bellevue or we moved to Canada. And I think on Ty's chart, he had a massive spreadsheet right from Skyward calling that out to get the numbers. So that's basic from there. Um, the survey that we send is also has been sent and we are getting, um, some responses back on that. And that's the one that we present annually. I think it's scheduled for December. And that will then encompass the whole year of, um, more information than Ty, because then you hear about people have moved, but some questions about satisfaction with the district and whatnot around that survey that will come up around in December.
My, my only question is whether, um, that the numbers that you were just pointing to us go from, from last June until now, correct? And I'm just wondering, do we know how many families have moved to stay to private school and just not come back yet? And are we going to be factoring that? And I'm not expecting you to be able to pull that number out of your head, but I'm also just wondering, like, are we going to be able to factor that into our projections for the future? You know, are we going to have the demographer, for example, take another look at, at, you know, student numbers?
In terms of looking forward, um, this is still very uncharted waters. Um, uh, we, we had made some assumptions this, for this year that we felt were, were fairly reasonable in terms of looking at where the pandemic was and, uh, and numbers. And, and we had surveyed families and, you know, we gotten back a number of responses indicating that they would be returning. Um, and so it's, uh, trying to tease out a lot of this information is, it's incredibly difficult at this point to try to come up with a, a, a consistent, uh, conceptualization. In terms of moving forward, where we're going to be looking forward, I, I'm afraid we're going to have to be a lot more conservative as we look forward in terms of what we're projecting. And we've, we've been hit twice, um, with some pretty, um, concerning enrollment drops. Um, some were strictly pandemic related, and I think this year is more opportunity related. I mean, if you have opportunities to go live anywhere, um, then keep your job. I mean, I think there's, I think a lot of people are seizing those opportunities. Um, so it's, uh, looking as we move forward into projecting next year. And we're not the only district that's facing enrollment drops. Um, I know Superintendent Kloski talked to some other superintendents this afternoon at a meeting that she attended um, and had heard that some other districts had, had loss of enrollment as well this year. So as we're getting in closer into the October counts, the official counts, we'll start getting more information from other districts and where they're looking and we'll have a better picture. But, uh, and we'll have to take a definite closer look into the, the surveys that we're sending out to families and, uh, this fall about, you know, satisfaction with the district and, um, and take a look at, you know, how do we start? Do we be more conservative or do we, uh, project a few more returning?
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to add too, you know, surveys are only if there's what we get returned. There's even a space on Ty's chart that you know, we're reviewing in this afternoon where even the registars couldn't tease out, like, there's just nothing. They cannot know. They just didn't respond. And I think that was in the, uh, maybe in the ten percent range as well. So there's always going to be those that they just don't need a response, you don't have a response. But there's two thirds of movement off the island with, um, largely than we anticipated, especially, um.
Thank you. Tam, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, Maggie Ty. Um, Ty, uh, you mentioned this was like a hundred eighty-five below projection. And I know when we projected, we were projecting more, right? So within this one eighty-five, how many were actually people who have attended, uh, you know, our schools and have left? Or are they all one eighty-five?
Um, uh, that, that distinction is a bit harder to tease out because we do have families that moved onto the island. And we do have new families that did register. We had families that registered their, their first children coming into the district in kindergarten and first grade. Um, so the number of, of withdrawals, um, from the period from the end of June to now, that I was pulling information from, we had a hundred and seventy-one withdrawals um, that I was looking at. Uh, and then they could just be that the, the, the numbers that we projected for new enrollment, new growth in each of the group accounts for that. It's, it's, at this point, we just don't have a whole lot of fully concrete numbers.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, just, I think sometimes when we say projection, because I knew we were projecting new students. And so what you're saying is, um, those who actually registered, uh, by, uh, around June, there were, uh, they registered and a hundred seventy-one of them actually withdrew since then.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I, I appreciate that, um, you know, I feel, uh, I mean, all this is not on you, Ty. I know you're like the bearer of bad news, right? Um, and I do appreciate, uh, the fact that, um, you know, you feel the, the, the gravity of all this as we all do. And think about how this impacted our budget, because, um, many people are, um, impacted by this. And I do appreciate Fred in, uh, doing more surveys and searching out why. So, you know, we can be more proactive and seeing as I think what Maggie Ty was alluding to, like, seeing how the, the people who are still living on Mercer Island, you know, what can we do to make sure that, um, we create a space that they want to return from private school to public school.
Thank you, Donna.
I just would like to know that kindergarten and first grade were spot on. So congratulations, Ty, because those were a bit of a, um, a shot in the dark for this year because those are the numbers that were greatly impacted last year. So, um, in trying to figure out who was going to come back, um, the, the actual, those, those bigger surprise was more in the grades two through, um, nine, actually, was the biggest surprise as to options that Ty had that now.
And I think just kind of weighing in along those lines of some of the numbers that are coming in, um, you know, we all, we, we survey families who, uh, in February, and those capture the September one to January thirty-one withdrawals. And then we survey again in September and that captures February one through August thirty-one. Um, whereas we were still seeing high percentages of respondents saying we're leaving because of COVID reasons. That flipped big time for this group that left between February and August where at least two thirds of them and responses are still coming in, said it has nothing to do with their experience in the district. That they're leaving for, you know, whatever else, and then it's teased out from there. So we'll continue to break that down. And I'll have an update for you in, uh, December.
I know we're doing the new family event on October. How many students is represented in the new family event, out of curiosity?
It was smaller than previous years and some of them, when Craig worked with Giovanna to produce that list that he sends out to the new family, um, some of them were, were returning families who were with us last year, but they showed up as new families that they were, were new enrollees. So, um, we've been well over a hundred in the past several years and is well below that. So new families who haven't been enrolled in the district previously.
Um, so we've been anticipating that enrollment decline for, I mean, just sickly, right? So we know that it happened quick. Um, are these numbers in line with, I mean, how are these numbers different from kind of what we were expecting? And, and we know it happened faster and more sudden because of the issues we've talked about. But hope, you know, assuming this is, it all happened at once instead of gradual. Where are we in terms of our projections? Like, say, you know, where were we five years from now?
We are pretty close to where we were projecting to be in about three to four years. Um, that was a pretty, it was a pretty fast drop. Um, we had, as we had looked at the, the enrollment curve, um, moving out into the outer years, you know, we started seeing it accelerate a little bit more, but that's partially because of the formula and how the averaging works. Um, but as we're looking at it now, we really are hitting more of a, uh, friggin' range than we had anticipated.
And just to remind the board, we had built a budget out, we had to go about four years out, um, pre-pandemic that was making some budget reductions over that timeframe, um, that we're anticipating that over four years we would reduce by. Now, now we had to do it in a much faster rate, which is again, more, more painful.
I'm never asked my question of, in the, the diagram of the overlap of, um, where we were anticipating a drop already in enrollment, um, and then this other pandemic drop as well. Where does that cross over? And I imagine it's pretty hard to tease out. Um, but we were expecting, as we were just talking, that drop in enrollment. Um, another thing too is that, um, so education is required starting for all children at age eight in the state of Washington. You don't have a choice. Your child needs to be enrolled in school. But there's always a plethora of choices, um, and there's private schools and there's home schools and there's, uh, alternative learning. Um, there's a whole variety of choices that can be made. And for many of our families on Mercer Island, demographics here, there were a lot of choices that can be made. Um, I, I think it's really hard to not address the fact that in a global pandemic, it's really going to color those choices. It may not be the district. It may be socioeconomic. It may be the, the fact that the, the choices that your child's enrolled, but you can now work from the eastern part of the state where, where there are fewer people. I mean, we live in King County, so we're immediately surrounded, you know, our state of twenty-five thousand immediately surrounded by two million people. So there's some folks who are making choices just based on population density. So it's hard to tease out why that's happening and probably it's going to be really difficult to put a pin on why people are making different choices, um, or moving to a private school and, and whether private school offers versus a public school and the constraints that a public school system is under. Because we're not the same as a private school or a home school. We have really specific parameters that are placed on us. So I want to be cautious to not lean in too heavily in trying to market ourselves into bringing the, the widget, the, the income back into the district. The district over time will size itself appropriately to its student population. We're a district that already knew we were shrinking because that, that's where birth rates are going in King County. We've known this for a long time. So, yeah, I, I think it's good to be cautious about that in, in trying to mine in as much data as we can get. But there's going to be some unknowns. And if there's one thing that Dr. Kendrick has been saying to Mercer Island School District now, this is for years is when you make projections, you can't rely on the unknowns because they're unknowns. So you can't build a model, you can't build a, a projection model with all these unknowns in it. Um, we've talked about that with transit and what the light rail has been to the school district and the different housing. So we're in the middle of a global pandemic, so there are some unknowns that are going to remain in the street to us.
I think, and that's very true, but I think that that's also an important factor for some families in their decisions about when to come back to the district. Because I think that we are in a pandemic, there's still a lot of uncertainty. Kids' education for sure was disrupted last year and their social emotional development was disrupted. And so if they've got something that's working for their family and they can afford to continue, say, private school, there is a, a craving for kind of stability, I think, for those families. Whereas families that already had their kids back in on a hybrid basis in the spring felt more comfortable, you know, just continuing on and just naturally letting their kids back, slot back, slot back into school. So I personally am optimistic that, that in another year's time, more families are going to come back, actually. Um, I, I will certainly, um, you know, go with the predictions recommended by, you know, Ty and our demographer. But, but I, I am very optimistic. I do think that, I think that people right now are just, just want to keep anything good that's happening for their kids happening.
I, I do think we have to recognize that we're making cuts now that we had to make. We would have had to make three years from now. So that's, that's a, that's a big impact on staff and things like that. So, um, not what we entirely expect. And to Ty's point about being conservative, I mean, I, I, I think we tried once on being optimistic, actually, maybe, maybe we tried twice on being optimistic. And I think as, as a board, when Ty thinks about, and just as guidance perhaps, I mean, at least from my perspective, we should think about being conservative on the next round. Even if, you know, we are making harder cuts than we ever expected. And that's, that's a disappointment, but better to make those hard cuts and be pleasantly surprised. I don't think we could afford, you know, to deal with one point six million dollar deficit again. I believe we've really pushed our, our fund balance down significantly. Again, thinking about rainy days, um, but clearly this storm has run a lot longer than we expected.
I, I totally agree. I'm just paying into my little personal, in my heart.
I, I appreciate it.
I endorse the conservative approach.
I, I appreciate that. I didn't, didn't even call you out at all. On that, although I, I, I'm aware now in retrospect, I probably did full pull that.
To your point, Director DeSousa, the, uh, spending down the fund balance for the nineteen, twenty year and now doing it again in the, um, twenty-one, twenty-two, I'm sorry, yes, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two. That was a conversation I had with my superintendent colleague. Much larger districts, much larger spend down. But everybody nodded their head and said, this isn't sustainable. This spending huge, you know, spending down of, of fund balance is not sustainable, you know, without making adjustments. Um, and it's easier to make those adjustments when it's slow, like we had planned. Ty and I have been, you know, very careful and, you know, we're going to, a lot of it will be able to be attritioned. And unfortunately, that's no longer the case and having to do it very quickly. Um, and Ty will say we need to right-size, which means you look at our class, that is, which are also part of the report. And you look at the numbers of the projections and what we stacked up and what we're actually at. So that then impacts the spring when tough decisions need to be made when it comes to real needs.
I, I think the other thing too. I, I think the other thing to appreciate, you know. About thirty five percent of the hundred and eighty five is about sixty six students who have left the district. To private schools or some other schooling yet still reside on the island. That's a pretty significant number. And that's making a big dent in our, in our budget. So it's from my mental model, we keep wondering what is a. Loud crowd of compliances, what's a vocal majority, what's a vocal minority? What's a vocal subset that makes a material difference to this district? It does sound like sixty six. Kind of sets a low bar of what's a, what's a material impact to this district in terms of voices. So also another thing to, to take away when we hear feedback. You know, if the numbers are over sixty six, maybe there's some material there.
Is, and I, and I guess I would just love continuing to hear the conversation about whether or not open enrollment is. A place we want to be considering. I mean, I know that it's been done before and. I wasn't in the district at that time and I'm not suggesting we do that now. I'm just, I'm just saying the conversation. Cause that really can solve a lot of problems on a temporary basis.
And that's a consideration that needs to be announced by April fifteenth. So we'll absolutely be looking very closely at. Policy and there is some language in the policy that allows. That will be, you have lots of opening in middle school, but not in different grades. So there is some language in there. So we'll be looking, we were having that discussion today as well in our quick cabinet meeting about, you know, what's, what does that look like?
So wouldn't it be easier to pull their students back that still remain on the district? It seems like that would be easier than looking outside the district. I mean, we, we very clearly have lost students from our district. And they remain on island and then go to private school or some homeschool or something like that. It feels, it, it feels like that's raising the bar to bring them back. If we go off island, perhaps, you know, at that point, you're, you're not looking at what's closest to you, right? Are you really raising the bar or not? You know, we don't know.
I would, before we spend much time on that, I would want to know historically what percentage is private. There's always going to be private schools and there's a. Ton of different reasons why families choose that. And unless that's changed substantially, I, I don't know that that's something, I mean, what I think is, I mean, there, there's pros and cons to open enrollment. What I think is great about it is, is, it's people who are seeking to be part of this community and I, and I think that's great. But I, I, I don't disagree with that unless it's, you know, historically, like we always. Hear about families that, you know, are public and through elementary or they're private through elementary and then they come back or, you know. Families have different philosophies and unless that's changed substantially, I wouldn't think that we're going to be able to really change that trend too much. Obviously, we still listen to individuals' concerns.
So it's, I mean, clearly the enrollment drop three years ahead of where it should be. That's changed. That's, that's a substantial change.
That's a pandemic.
Yeah, that's a pandemic. That's not because Mercer Island schools are failing and people are sending their kids to private school.
Well. What we're going to go deep in on is, is when you talk about raising the bar and bringing people back, that's precisely what I'm going to talk about. There are folks who don't want their students in the school because of the, the masking regulation or the distance regulation or the ventilation regulation. Or the, the cleaning schedule or because there are things associated with the pandemic. So parents aren't, for whatever reason, on any number of political items on the spectrum in the, the scatter shot. Are like, nope, I'm not gonna, not gonna do that for public education. And there are things that we are out of our control that we can't change. We have to be compliant with public health. We have to be compliant with the governor's mandate. So it's not about raising the bar or enticing people back. There, there's a huge drop off in our population. Because we're in the middle of a global pandemic. In order to mitigate that pandemic. There are just certain things that certain families are not going to want, that they're going to either accomplish by staying home or doing an alternative learning experience. Or get them a private school. And that's, that's the nature of it. And that's the nature of public education. No other education. Entity that, that serves K twelve is under as much scrutiny and compliance and regulation and policies as public education.
Tam, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just want to remind that these numbers were people who have registered. And withdrew in July, in June. So it's not like they've been thinking about private schools. Or, and our projection has already taken into account of movements, you know, that are generally like, show us whether we're, this is below projection. So I agree with like, if we were to prioritize, right, and our efforts. How do we make sure we prioritize people who are living on the island, who are voting on, you know, our levies? And so because it's all tied to, if they're living here, but they're going somewhere else, it's just concerning about our future. You know, other decisions that we need to make. And so I don't know, we need a larger conversation about it. I, I do think we, we need to be thoughtful. And we can't just dismiss it as, oh, they just want to leave and that's just normal. But I do think we need to do more internal like reflection to see what is it, how we can, it doesn't, we're always in a process of continuous improvement. Listening to our community and even in that process, if we can't satisfy them, but then we are, if they feel heard. You know, then we will gain support in other areas, even if they don't put their kids back into school. But I do worry about the viability of the levies that are coming up if people keep continuing to leave the island.
I will, I'm sorry, just real quickly, sorry. This is a great district. People work incredibly hard in this district. And I, I mean, we just heard from all the work being done with COVID and, and keeping our kids safe. There is so much involved in running a school. But it's also at the same time, we can appreciate all that and we can love our district, just like we love our kids. But we can be critical. Sorry, sorry, but we can be critical and point out, you know, issues that need to be fixed. And I think we should do that with both transparent speaking, because I try, tell my son, he's being lazy and not getting his homework done. Doesn't mean I love him any less.
Brian, you look like you're pulling.
Yeah, again, I just have to push back on this narrative that people are leaving the district because the district is failing their students. We have an amazing district or one of the top districts in the state, or one of the top districts in the United States. Constantly improving and growing. And yeah, there are flaws and things with every system, but the system has continually grown. And the fact that our educators and our administrators and our support staff and our registrars. Everyone and volunteers that support this, this community. Were able to get kids back into schools faster than almost anyone else in our region. I, I don't think this is a matter of our, our academic. Program failing our students. I think our, our numbers are down because we're in a global pandemic and people are concerned about their health and the health of their children. I think numbers will change once children are vaccinated, you know, be, you know, five to twelve. That's going to have an impact on our numbers. I don't think this is in any way because the academic program has failed our children. But we're always improving. There's always opportunity to improve, but. This is an awesome system and it has done really well in spite of a global pandemic. So I, I just have to continue to push back on that narrative.
I don't want to spend much more time on this because A, it's already seven o'clock. We've been going for an hour and we're not even finished with the superintendent's report. B, uh, this issue of like on island versus off island is going to come up in the spring as Superintendent Kloski said, it has to be. Filed by April fifteenth. So I think, you know, February, March, you'll start to hear more about it. And I think as Brian says, that, that once younger kids are vaccinated, we may find a lot of things start shifting around. I know myself, when I got vaccinated, I had not realized until that point how, what a state of total anxiety I was in constantly every day going out in public, like. Those rare occasions when I did, like, it was such a relief and I know how relieved people are going to feel when their young kids are vaccinated. And they may start making different decisions. And right now we're doing a lot of like speculating and I know we're all kind of triangulating based on people that we know and families that we know and what kind of decisions they've been making. But I think at this point we should just kind of, we've, we've heard the numbers. We are grateful for that after reporting of the numbers. Everybody's a little worried about, you know, what's going to happen over the next year or two in terms of enrollment, but I think it's just a lot. Would you like to finish the superintendent's report?
That's the end of it.
Oh, okay. An hour. Thank you. So. We have lots more to get through tonight. We have number two, partial governance process monitoring. Board policy eighteen hundred O B nine, communication and support to the board. It is time to hear about the Mercer Island School District, District Improvement Plan.
And I think we have Director Prescott joining us to support this as well as Assistant Director Nova Williams, I don't see Nova.
I think it's Beth.
Oh, it's Beth. You're great. I apologize. So they have a slide deck that I'll go to, which is attached to. The agenda as well as the improvement plan and stuff. Take it away, Learning Services.
Great, thank you. I think the conversation you've been having is similar to one we're having in a, in a. Very similar way, but different context. And that is that there's this constant tension between. Responding and coming back from a global pandemic. But how do we take steps forward and continue to think about our growth forward? And so I think you'll see that in our improvement plan that we have put together, work with our leadership team on it. And then next month, you'll hear from, start hearing from the schools on their school improvement plans. And that will be your late October meeting as well as your November meeting. And I think you'll see some similarities there. But I want to start with a quote that I think captures this fairly well in terms of. How we're thinking about this tension between what was and what is and what will be. And that's, there's no reason that we would go back to normal and reconstruct the barriers. All children benefit from novel ways of thinking about what schooling could be. And so as we think about the barriers that might have been in existence for some students and completely transparent for others back in March of twenty twenty. We. As we think about those barriers, I think it's now time to think about, not only are we looking to not reorient barriers, but also are there any lingering? And so similar to last year, the quote that leads this off is access for those denied is the goal. Access for everyone is the result. So our goal is to continue to identify, to systematically remove barriers that impede students' equitable access. To learning their growth opportunities and ultimately meeting their full potential. I think there's elements of our values tied up in that with the whole child. With equitable and accessible learning, thinking about making sure that it's all students that we're thinking about. But I love the quote below because it's about, the goal is there and, and we want to make sure that there isn't, we're not denying that access. But the second part of that really gets into the growth mindset of access to everyone is really what we're trying to create. And how do we make that as transparent to one student as it already is to another student? We recognize that in order to pull this off, it requires the lens of everyone. We all have blind spots. I have blind spots, both as an educator and a parent. Our bus drivers have blind spots, not just on the bus. But certainly as they're thinking about their students, our nurses, our admin assistants, our principals, our teachers. And we miss some things, some things that we may have put into place that inadvertently created a barrier for a student. And so it's incumbent upon all of us and it's all staff working with all learners all of the time. And thinking about how to be collaborative and partner and really work across our systems. So that we're offering the very best to students and we're not closing any doors as we move forward.
And Fred, as I enter into the next slide, if I could just say something about the previous slide. If that's okay. Yeah, it's, so I actually was preparing for that slide, Fred. So. One of the things, you got carried away. One of the things that I just wanted to share with you all. So I focus at the elementary schools and just walking in the office areas, specifically one of the schools. Last year toward the end of the school year, we were talking about how language matters. It matters so much about how we speak of. People to people. And when I walked into the office area, I noticed a shift in language and it was so. It was so uplifting and so empowering. And I just felt that you could just see the faces of people just lighten up, just hearing different language. So language matters. Language can be a barrier. That's something that I saw across the school building. So it was super exciting to see that and it's. It's happening and it's, it's really exciting to see. So. Thank you for letting me share that. So Fred had mentioned earlier when he read the. Our district improvement goal, the connection to our values. So really thinking about alignment to our values, vision, vision and mission. Supporting the whole child and creating those inclusive and equitable settings for students. Ensuring our communities are safe and supportive, providing that rigorous and challenging learning for students. Making sure they are ready to be lifelong learners for their futures and. Just making sure students have those access points to engage critically. And think critically and solve problems creatively and work collaboratively and also in alignment with our WASA inclusionary practices. And with our commitment to implement a multi-tiered system of support. Built on a foundation of universal design for instruction. Of course, of course, inclusive of equity and access for all students, engagement with families and community. Academic support, behavior systems and social emotional learning. And then the next slide talks about the superintendent focused priorities in alignment with our goal. Professional learning for all, that student centered, whole child focus. And the quality teaching and learning, collaborative, educator driven, multi-tiered systems of supports and from many aspects. Inclusive and equitable learning, including that student voice. Where is that student voice? And just speaking from a special education lens, just thinking about how we include the voice of students receiving special education services. In their, their I E Ps and with teams and meetings. And just making sure that we are providing inclusive and equitable services for students, for all students. That are accessible and thinking about their story, strengths and needs.
So some of the action items we've already identified and are working to implement are include revising programming to provide services and not programs. Allowing equitable access to said services regardless of what that need is. We have leadership teams at all levels working to identify barriers and begin dismantling those barriers. We often talk in committee meetings and advisory meetings about what barriers we're, we're trying to break down. And if we don't know what the barriers are, then it's using data to identify what barriers exist. We look at proportionality information and then additional indicators, trying to make sure that we are looking for barriers. We're addressing barriers and we're taking action to dismantle them. We've got professional learning communities, committee work, and again, it's all tied back to that identifying barriers. And this is a priority for all work and direction of the district. So you'll see when you start hearing the SIPs next week and the week, or I'm sorry, the next meeting and the meeting after. They're tied back to this work and this notion of removing barriers for access for students. We will engage in regular review of data at all levels with a process in place for communication to address observations and actionable steps. And we want to make sure the data is accessible at all levels and we want to provide transparency about the authenticity of our progress. And something that's come up in different arenas is this notion that there's. And something that's come up, um, in different arenas is this notion that there's an ingrained societal suspicion that intentionally supporting one group hurts another. That equity is a zero-sum game. In fact, when the nation targets support where it is needed most, when we create the circumstances that allow those who have been left behind to participate and contribute fully, everyone wins.
So that's a broad overview of what we're working on as a district. And, you know, I can think about some specific examples, um, of thinking about the way that maybe we targeted intervention for students receiving, um, learning support services. And we may have purchased a particular, um, intervention such as Read Well. And then we said, well, that's going to be the intervention, but you have to be in learning support in order to get that intervention. Um, or you have to have been identified with a certain label in order to get something. And, um, what we've really started to shift and, um, you know, Beth, I think that, that moment in that front office to see someone shifting their perspective on how they're even talking about students is that it's not about a student and their label to get the services. It's about the needs and the strengths and the weaknesses and, and that's where then we need to provide the services. So making sure that what we have in terms of resources that are available to one teacher can be available to others. And that we're thinking about owning all the students. Um, I was having a conversation with our, um, our transportation director and he was really thinking about, um, even the routes that they use in transportation. And we used to have, um, the, the sped route or we have the, the P L P route or we have this. And, um, you know, he was doing thinking this summer, thinking about, um, how do I change that? How do I change that I don't have certain drivers who only transport this profile of students? And so even those conversations, I think, are evidence that we're moving in a direction. Um, we have a lot, uh, a long way to go, um, but we've come a long way too since I've been in the district. Um, but it really is about making sure that we do have finite, finite resources. And how do we make sure that we're maximizing those for all students and not withholding them for some or giving them to others, but making them accessible? So with that, we can turn it over to questions.
Um, thank you for all of this. It's, um, really amazing to see, uh, you know, four years ago when, when Superintendent Kloski joined us and, and starting on this, this journey and to see where we are. Um, you know, the change doesn't happen overnight and it's a long process and lots of things happen in between. But, um, but it's really exciting to see where we are on it now. Um, but that being said, so I, so I think the improvement plan is great. Um, but it's only as good as, long as everyone knows that it's happening. So how, what is the leadership team's strategy to make sure that our community is involved, is involved and working towards the same goals?
I think one of the strategies that we started using last year and will continue is making sure that when we're in a superintendent equity advisory committee meeting or we're in a superintendent teaching and learning advisory or instructional materials committee or P T A meetings, that we're always going back to why, where are we prioritizing and, and how are we putting something into play? Um, we are notorious in education and this district is certainly one of them where, um, we're quick to want to do everything. Um, and I think now more than ever, we have to realize that there are some really great ideas out there and that we could be doing. But we may choose not to because we're looking through a lens of, um, does it check the boxes in terms of focusing on identifying and removing barriers? Or have we thought about a great idea, but it will potentially hasn't really flushed out how it's going to prohibit barriers from, from emerging? So, um, one of the strategies going back to even the very first kickoff meeting in August with our entire leadership team is even the simple phrase of know every student and staff member by name, strength and height. And how do we keep pushing on that? Because that's really at the variability. This week during our I L T meeting, instructional leadership team meeting, um, this is what we spent time on is talking about learner variability. And that it's not just our students who are, who have variability, but our staff. So how do we think about professional development so that we're removing barriers for our staff so that they can access learning as well? Um, and so I think it's a constant return back, um, Director Lurie, and making sure that, uh, we do a better job to make sure that it's not just a plan that we present to you, but that it is a, a living plan. And as we're thinking about COVID and having COVID response plans, how do we make sure we draw this back as well to make sure it's a line? Jamie or Beth, do you want to add to that?
I mean, I can think of a couple, and, and I think I, I hear you, Director Lurie, where we need to find ways to take things out of committees and subgroups and find a way to get them to a broader audience. And so I think that is an ongoing, um, work in progress. But I, I can think back to agendas of a number of different groups that, that I work in where the top of every agenda is just sharing barriers that we've removed and taking the time to acknowledge that. And if that's ever present, that's something that we are, it's constantly part of our narrative. Um, hopefully that, that begins to gain traction and, and people are talking about that and sharing that great work um, and how it's impacting students. But I, I agree, we need, we do need to improve how we disseminate that.
I think that's especially important right now because parents can't be in their kids' classrooms as much as they normally would due to COVID. I know that some more volunteers that are being allowed in, but I just mean, there's just not the casual, like, parents kind of wandering down the hallway to drop something off that, that normally would give parents an opportunity to see all this stuff in action and be like, wow, check that out. You know, so, so, uh, I, for one, as a board director, as a parent, would just love, you know, continued updates, which I'm sure you'll be giving us on kind of how this plays out in, in real time. David, do you want to say?
Yeah, I, I, I love the way you approach the program. Um, the, the data transparency you talked about, you know, it'd be interesting to see what we're measuring to, to, to be truthful to ourselves. Now, how, what, what type of metrics do we think about? Breaking, breaking down barriers is but one of many different metrics we could think about. And then do we, I, I don't know, maybe this is too much in the weeds, but you know, we, we've been successful with COVID dashboard for communicating just the safety in the schools, uh, as it is now. Um, superintendent search has communication, um, the budget has communication, we do it with staffing plans. Do we think having these metrics, uh, communicated on the website would, would be useful to people?
I think they will be on the website as they become part of your monitoring reports for those various places where the district improvement plan will be able to fit in. We'd certainly highlight them, um, as we recreate some of the things on, on the website. But really pointing to this improvement plan when staff is, um, coming back to the board on those monitoring reports and what are the things that we're measuring, what is the data that we're using, what are the, the data points and the charts? And, um, sometimes they're hard to dig out when you're, um, in Board Knock. But is there a way to, to highlight them on the board page or on the website in some way?
And so a couple of things, um, and the first one, I think is maybe addressing the, the metrics that you're talking to. And I think some of, some of these are going to be really hard to track the measure. That there's, there's not going to be a visible measurable thing that directly connects. Um, because this isn't another thing on the plate for us to do. This is the plate, this is the whole system. So it's changing the culture, it's changing the climate, it's changing how students feel connected to their community. And as a result of that, we hopefully will see have your students, students who report, I feel creative or I have more ways to approach a problem or, um, better engagement. Um, we may see attendance rise because more students feel engaged. So there's, there's all sorts of ways where we're going to see improvements through many of these systems, I think, um, that aren't just directly attributable. So I, I, I hope that we're able to give some credit for some of this work where those, those lines are going to be invisible. We know that it's the right work to do, which is why we're doing it. The other thing too is when it comes to communication, um, so we have over a dozen different advisory boards just at the district level. And I can't remember the number for it. It, it's over twelve, it's even perhaps higher than that. Other than with the superintendent's equity advisory council and the learning services advisory and all the work groups that go on improving materials and reading lists. And, and then you get down to each of our individual schools and there's the parent advisory committees. All of these groups have community members that sit on them. And then each of those classrooms in the elementary school has room parents that are there. Um, and so as a P T A dad, part of that was engaging in conversation and asking questions to the teacher and what do you need? And giving that back to the parents and creating that loop. So a part of us owning this as an entire community means that as parents, as community members, as representatives on those councils and committees, how are we taking the information we're learning in those groups? And how are we sharing those out to our peers in the community? Having conversations and getting their feedback and bringing it back to that committee and that group. And that's a, that's a culture shift across the whole district. And I have been frustrated at points in the past with those committees where it's felt really one directional in the communication. Where I'm like, okay, so I just received all this information, but wasn't able to give back any feedback. And then maybe I remembered to take that information, share it out at my group meetings when I go back to the, the, my parents' group as a room parent or whatever. Um, so it's important to remember that it, it, it won't work if it's all just one directional. It really does require all of us in the community leaning in, asking questions in those groups of knowing who your representatives are on those groups. Um, like who, who was in your parent advisory committee representing in regarding the first grade in your school? And when's the last time you had a conversation with them about the meeting with the principal and what we shared there and providing input, right? So, um, I, I think there's a lot of work that we're going to be able to do in our culture, especially as we're coming out of pandemic and out of Zoom meetings and getting back into face-to-face meetings where we're excited to talk with each other and share that information. Um, I think, I think the, the burden of that rests not only on the shoulders of the district, but also in the community as a whole. And there are so many amazing groups out there doing amazing work, our community-based work. You having this conversation.
It's funny to say, if, um, and yous could put out the, um, we looked at the slide deck, but there's another attachment that's the plan. And district improvement plan here too, I believe it's page two of two. And the results, um, what will change and improve as a result of the goal, how will this school be improved? You can see some bullet points there that talk about, um, some of the metrics that we would utilize. Attending thing one of an engagement piece, but remember we do have a lot of different, um, survey tools that we use that can help us show what, um, what is happening for students and their engagement and their, their, their feeling about school as well. So those are some of the, the items that are part of that, the plan as well.
And normally you would have seen fundamental, fundamentals one and two at this point in the year. But we delayed those because we don't have a lot of the new data coming forward. And so some of that will, some of this work will be looking at new information on our students, looking back two years ago and saying, okay, what's changed? And now going forward as we continue planning, as we continue to think about, um, putting in new interventions or what are we still missing? So, um, we are working out a little bit of a deficit model right now just because the student data is coming to us in different ways than it has before.
We haven't even tested for last year yet, that's fun. If you want to look at that one tool.
I do feel like this, I do feel like this process is, um, kind of like a scaffolding process, like you do when you're, when you're working with young children. You know, you're sort of like, you need only structures in place to kind of get it started and kind of get it rolling. And then it sounds like it's sort of taking on a loop of its own and getting moving. And then, but the same thing from what Deborah was saying earlier is like, you also need to scaffold for the community event for them to, to set expectations and for them to kind of understand what the next steps are. So this is really helpful to, um, to like hear this, this sum up at this point in the process. Tammy, did you have anything to add? I see your hand.
I do, thank you, Meg. It's high. Um, two points, I want to follow up on what Brian said about, uh, the community. Uh, you know, this flow of communication should be really comprehensive and be able to go to the community as well. And, you know, part of that, in order for that to happen, we have to make sure that our committees and the people who participate in these committees are truly representative of all different, uh, sections of our, uh, community. Otherwise, it does get stopped at a certain group of individuals who may, um, you know, again, you know, the barriers that schools deal with are barriers that in all organizations, right? Of how, um, how are we inclusive to all groups of folks? Um, and then going back to, I think, a couple of board members mentioned about evaluation. And I, I'm wrapping my head around where I'm all in for this, removing barriers. I think it's awesome that we're intentional about it. And how as we're doing this, I guess I'm wrapping my head around, uh, removing labels, which we should. But then in our work with, uh, students, recognize that, you know, students of color, students who have special needs, students who, uh, are accelerated learners or high caps have different barriers, right? And as in our evaluation process, to make sure that all students are meeting this metric, you know, somewhere in our action, we have to be somewhat intentional about recognizing the specific barriers that different types of students have and be able to measure that. Otherwise, when we do really just kind of comprehensive, um, you know, we'll hit some. But I, uh, but I think that it might be hard to really see true outcomes, uh, at the end. And it's going to be hard for us to, you know, as people are concerned about, you know, are my kids losing out on something? I think data to show that, you know, specifically certain kids in high cap or accelerated learning have not lost out in anything. But, so the evaluation process has also been a little bit targeted in, uh, the current groups of students that we had, even though we're attempting, that's why I'm struggling, you know, attempting to move all labels, but recognizing that, um, there are different barriers for different folks, different students.
Okay. Do we have more? I missed. Okay, those are some information. Thank you, everyone. Okay, next we are doing, um, board policy eighteen hundred O E eleven, facilities and capital assets project update. And the ever patient Brandy, I think is still.
I hope she's still there. Brandy, if you want to, if we want to let Brandy and her returner camera on, that would be great. This is the annual time when we bring the board up to date on what have been the major projects that occurred over the summer when our buildings are less occupied. And, um, I think we even have pictures because the picture always speaks to that. But Brandy's going to give you a little bit of a background on the big projects. Do we want to share screen?
Do you want me to share a screen or how would you like to do that?
Sorry, inadvertently closed it down.
Brandy, if you want to start talking, we'll get the.
Okay, let's, um, let's start, um, entries with the, uh, photos, would be great. Um, so there, you know, there, there's a very detailed spreadsheet that we can also take a, a look at when we talk about the twenty-one, twenty-two projects. Um, it says the same spreadsheet that we have looked at for the last six years where we've documented, uh, what was in that CapTech levy, um, things that have been added to that over time and things that have shifted and moved so that you can see and track that. So I thought we'd, um, we'd start and just talk about the twenty-twenty-one, um, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one projects that the district took on. Um, probably first and foremost, Tony's crew, uh, has been absolutely consumed with COVID. Uh, you know, implications in the schools for the last year. And so there were, um, a number of things that were initially scheduled in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one that we pushed forward into next year. Uh, but we did tackle, um, some kind of major things. Uh, one of them, we strike, restrikt all the parking lots, uh, which we rarely get a chance to do. to do without people in the buildings. So that was great. If you can advance to the next slide, Andrew's. We also undertook three significant roofing projects this year. So this is a photo of Lakewood Elementary. And luckily with the lumber shortage and increased prices this year, we only found four sheets of plywood on these buildings that had to be replaced. So Andrew, you can just advance through these slowly. This is Lakewood, this is Lakewood after we've pulled off all of the shingles and the old tar paper and have installed new ice and water shield and we're refilling. And we also did the maintenance shop. And you might remember that during Northwood, we built an addition onto that maintenance shop. So that's what you see at the far end of the building, that higher section. We did not re-roof that. We left that as is because it was relatively new and it didn't tie into any of our other roofs, so it made good sense to just leave that. This project was built at the same time the high school was, as was Crest. And so all three of those buildings were re-roofed this summer and all the work's complete. We also did a little bit of work for CTE and we converted the existing robotics room into a more functional space. So you can see here, we ordered steel, stainless steel top tables and we brought power down from the ceiling so that each of those workstations has access. And then as you can see, there are plexiglass dividers because of COVID. So that was, that was kind of a fun project. The large project that we really have been working on since last fall was the Northwood Pathways Building. And this went on a pad that we put in as part of the Northwood project. We manned conduit from the main electrical room in Northwood out to this pad. And we, so we had all of our impervious area calculations originally contemplated this. It did require an administrative design review with the city. And we had to do a, get the city to agree to allow us to place these buildings over stormwater easement, not a, not a small thing. So these are photos of the building going in. You saw that first building being craned and then set. We tried very hard within the constraints of a modular building to make this look and feel like a wing of Northwood, that it really belonged. And as you can tell, they're, they're a very different modular building than the portables that the district has put in, in years past at the other sites. It's called a Sage Portable. And it has all of these green components to it. So this is Saturday morning. You can see we have 11 sections to this building. And Andrew, if you just continue to cursor through. You'll see that's the first section of ATP that comes in, that's their kitchen. And then they completed those buildings on Saturday. So the, the next, those are all the footings underneath it. There's a lot of footings underneath it, but you can see they just sit right on top of that asphalt pad. The building is, is all there and intact at this point. We are pulling fiber and installing fire alarm. We have the full sound field systems in the building. You can see in these photos, there are ceiling fans that are similar to Northwood and the classroom portion of this, which for some reason I don't have a picture for you of, I'm sorry, but they are very similar to Northwood. They have the same wall of case work. Each classroom has a sink. And I believe these are the two general purpose classrooms will be used by after school care as soon as we get the complete. So we're targeting the 15th of October as the move-in date. So pretty exciting, big project. It came in quickly, but it, there's a lot of planning and effort that went into this. And we're really, really excited and we're really excited for Pathways to finally have a home, a purposely designed space for that program. So that's pretty much what we accomplished in 2020, 2021. Lots of other small things, but those were the big highlights. Andrew, if you want to change to that spreadsheet.
Come on, he's doing that. I want to say that the pathway building being placed down as it was, with a huge effort on, on our Brandy and Tony to remove barriers because the students have had many barriers to their learning. And it was discussed extensively, even when the facility master plan and wasn't something that rose up to the top. And so being able to remove the barriers to provide access for those students is really incredible and very proud of and very thankful to Brandy and Tony for the work to get this done during a pandemic, pandemic with construction costs, ability and all the other pieces that went to it. They really went out and for us in several ways. So thank you publicly, Brandy.
No, you're most welcome. And, you know, I think Sue Ann on a recent tour did a Zoom call with her kids and they are so excited to be in this building. I should say young adults, not kids, but they are all so excited and I hope that you'll all be there when they, when they make their entrance in because it'll, it'll be, it'll be really great. Very excited about that. So for 2021, 22, we have, we have our hands full. We have pushed a lot of things into this year and we have a couple of big question marks. And I think time will, you know, tell whether we, whether some of these we want to take on. But I think rather than go through this whole list with you, I'll just kind of tackle it big by, by sight. So at the high school, we want to start the process of replacing some of the carpet and flooring in that building that was installed in 97. So we have gotten a lot of years out of all of that flooring. And it's, it's too big of a project to tackle all at once. We need to do it during the summer and buy it off and, you know, chunks for us for a couple of years. And there's also a question. We have had in our budget money to turf the, one of the fields and would probably be the JV field up at the school. The cost is certainly more than was contemplated seven years ago when the capital project probably was put together. But we have a, a question of whether we'll do that and are seriously talking about it. We've also been carrying costs to replace the main bleachers at the, at the high school gym. They are, they are again, they're not even 97 vintage. They are original installation vintage. We put in caps on them in 97. So we may undertake part of that at least this year and we'll see. The main gym curtain will be replaced. And then we've also got a plan in place for improving the acoustics in the commons. And that's kind of a multi-stage process because we'd really like to do the flooring in the commons, but we don't want to put brand new flooring down and then run big lifts all over it. So really, we'd like to start at the top of that and then kind of work our way down. At Islander Middle School, we have really nothing major planned next year, this year. The new school is new and things are going well. And the older portion of the building is, at least from the long range facilities plan perspective, kind of first potentially for a bond. And so it's one we're trying to invest as little money in as possible. Same is true for Northwood. Northwood's in good shape. We don't have anything that needs to happen there. West Mercer is ready for roof replacement. And, you know, you can see the, the difference between what we had to do at IMS and what we had to do at Lakewood, catching these early. And early is what, 30 years? Is, is a, is a good investment for preserving the asset. We also have some partial carpet and flooring replacement. Brian, you know, after your comment at our last discussion, I'm going to make sure we get something done at West Mercer this year with carpet, but that will also fold into to next year's CAPTAC levy. We've also been looking at some ADA ramp issues. We have a ramp out of compliance, so there's, we potentially might do something with that. But again, we're, we'll see how that goes. Island Park, we have nothing major scheduled there. And again, it's the first one in the long range facilities plan for the elementary school. So we're, we're trying to coax it along without making any kind of significant investment in that. So that we have options in the future. At Lakewood, we're going to work on some carpet replacement there as well. And then just sort of our ongoing, you know, kitchen equipment that we deal with as it ages out. And then we've also been talking for a couple of years about reconfiguring some of the casework in the main office. We didn't do that when we put the security vestibule in. Did it at West Mercer, but we didn't. And at Island Park, but we haven't done that yet at Lakewood. And so we will probably undertake some casework updates there. Miscellaneous projects, I mean, obviously we're going to continue on with the COVID solutions. That's going to be an ongoing challenge this year. We're going to undertake the EV charging study and implementation for the bus lot. So whether that is, you know, to, I think we talked about it, it's not a question really of whether it's feasible, but it will take to do it. And we're looking at, how do we do that? Kind of a short-term version of that, which is four to six buses. And then how do we plan long-term for accommodating a larger number of buses? So that'll be a project for this year. And then we just have ongoing furniture issues to deal with in the older schools, particularly at the high school. And then painting, which has kind of gotten pushed out, but we're going to need to take them on a major project at the high school. That's a derivative stucco system on the gym. And we need to do some repairs with that and get that painted next year. And at Mary Way Pool, we'll be working on submitting in the next couple of weeks for a hundred percent grant from King County to do some planning work that would set the stage for a grant application the following year that King County would match one to one. So that's the plan. There's a lot to do this year. Any questions?
That is a very full slate.
It is a full plate. Yeah. Yeah, and you know, as we have done in other years, I'm sure that there will be some things that for any number of reasons, we decide need to get pushed into the following year. And there will be something we haven't thought of yet that will pop up that needs to be done. And that's the nature of that. But it is, it is extremely helpful to have those capital facilities dollars to be able to address these issues within the building.
If anyone else has questions?
Hi, I'd just like to echo thanks on behalf of the board as well. I think this spreadsheet is incredibly packed with details. Totally appreciate the column that tells us what was originally planned, what's new that we added, especially because of COVID and a lot of other reasons. And then I appreciate so much the transparency that shows what has been moved out into the next levy, levy as well. So I think this, this type of accountability and transparency helps us parse levies. So very much appreciated. And I, I, I think this spreadsheet alone is a huge benefit to the community to see that their funds are being stewarded well.
And I, I would add, but also to say thank you so much for the, the amazing feat of coordination that must have been involved in getting those, those portables onto the site and having everything match up and actually be where it was supposed to be. That's, thank you for that, Brandy.
Absolutely.
Okay, that was information only. So if there's no further other comments, I'll take hand on town. Then we are going to move on to see board policy 18011 facilities and capital assets, long-range facilities master plan, services update. This is also for information.
Right, this is actually the first update of the long-range facility master plan. So we've included links to the full report because it is very, very lengthy, but I did choose one slide to kind of review for the board, the long-range facility master plan that was just put into place in the past year. Tom?
So out of all the work that came, went into the facility master plan, the many, many meetings and many, many hours of, of meeting with the community and doing research and studying the buildings and the facilities and the condition of the facilities. Out of those 300 pages of the report, this is probably one of the more important pages that we can distill the work down to. And that's what the community feels is the priority for replacements. There was a number of scenarios that were put forward as kind of the, you know, last litmus test of what the community would think. And preferred plan that came out of the committee was a plan that finished, the placement priority, a plan that finished the middle school, replaced Island Park and did some work at high school in the crest, West Mercer, Lakewood High School and Pool. And that's not necessarily in terms of packages of, of, you know, grouping items together, but in terms of, you know, what is the community's priority in terms of achieving these goals? And at this point, for the first annual review of the plan, we haven't made any significant updates or changes to the plan. We have used the plan in terms of what the preferred scenario of replacement is in terms of our long-range planning or part of our levy planning, as well as what we're planning for the projects coming up in this current year. So we have been referencing internally as we look at, well, what are we planning to Island Park? Not really much right now because it's on the schedule for eventual replacement. West Mercer's a little further out. The boiler of West Mercer is pretty close to 30 years old. And so those are the kind of considerations that we need to be thinking of in terms of, of our planning and our process. So while we haven't made any change to the plan yet, we have been looking at it and using it for planning. Now, as we are looking at enrollment, as enrollment has significantly changed since we first started the planning process and that decreased significantly. We had been planning, we had been considering that there would be an enrollment decrease over time that has accelerated, which means that we'll probably need to take a look at in the next year or two. Looking at what does that mean for facilities in the future? How do we look at the facilities that we have and when we plan on going out for replacements in terms of square footage or, or student enrollment capacity? So those are some things that we're going to be needing to look at, but at this point we haven't had a chance to really dig in. Any questions?
You can't see us all because most of us are not on Zoom, but there was a lot of headlining going on as you were speaking about the kind of projections forward.
Thank you. This is, this is great. This was represented a great deal of work by the community as you, as you echoed earlier in Thai. So, and I'm, I'm, I was super thrilled to see it used in the, in the levy capital projects planning phase, which is exactly how you envisioned it when you started this work. So that's working out. Maybe it's going to also inform us as to when we need to start thinking about a bond. Now that we're piling things up on Island Park, clearly everything we've piled up on Island Park has a finite lifetime. At some point we have to pay the piper, either fixing it to a levy or building a bond to build, to rebuild the facility. So that will also be something we should keep track of. You know, the items you postponed, do they have a life cycle of five years out or one year out? You know, I don't think it'd be one year out, but you know, I think that'll be interesting too. But this is, this is a great opportunity for the community to give us feedback around this, think about how they want to think about our facilities and how we should be planning for them. So, and I appreciate the idea of enrollment and how it would affect this, but I don't think that changes necessarily the ordering at this point or the eventual need as well.
Um, I agree. And I think this would also be a great way that we can use thought exchange, not now, not this full year, maybe at the end. But in terms of kind of gauging the community appetite for being ready to start, when, you know, it'd be great to be able to finish.
when, you know, it would be great to be able to finish the middle school. It'd be great to get started with Island Park. And, and I think now that we have this Thought Exchange tool to really kind of gauge where people are at. It was, it was an amazing opportunity to get to work on the facilities master plan and to, to see the excitement from our community members. And it wasn't all parents. I mean, it was, you know, community across the board. And to see, to see the excitement about building for our kids' future. Still a bit shocking how old the buildings are on our island. And, and I think now that we have this way to communicate and bring everyone along with us on the planning, I'm excited about that. So thank you for that. And, and I agree that this priority list, you know, is still working for me at least.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Can we squeeze in one last topic before we take a break? Let's do that. Item D, board policy eighteen hundred OE eleven, facilities and capital assets, capital projects slash technology and transportation levies. So are we, do we, is there going to be like a presentation or should we?
There isn't. It's the same slide that we had attached before, as well as the other attachment with some options, absolutely options that Ty had worked through when, as you were discussing a transportation levy. So again, here we are, the last meeting in September. Our meeting in October would potentially be the first reading of resolutions for any levies to be voted on in February. And then if we needed a second read, you would have that opportunity and there's a second meeting on October. So I think really what staff is looking for is any action as to which resolutions we need to be preparing.
Great. Thank you. So we've had a lot of discussion over several meetings now about the topic of a possible transportation levy. And I'm really glad that we've had that discussion. I think we've got a lot more ideas and a lot more kind of direction with how we're thinking about it. But, but the consensus that I, that, that I've been hearing is that, that we don't believe that we want to pursue a transportation levy for 2022. So I guess I'm looking for a motion on that and then we can have discussion. Or would you like to have a discussion first and then a motion and then more discussion? Brian?
As a point of order, I, I would, if, if there's no need to make a motion, then there's no need to make a motion.
So are we just saying by consensus then that they're, that we're not interested in pursuing levy at this time?
I would rather, rather than make a motion than the negative.
Yeah. Tam, since we, we can't, we can't, you know, feel your vibe.
I'm sorry. I, I didn't realize we, there were consents that we talked about not moving forward. I thought the last time we talked, we were exploring the options. We're still exploring, but then.
In the interest of certainty for our, our district administration though, I, I appreciate we, we've talked a lot about the transportation levy. But I, I, I actually would like to make a motion that we do not move forward with the transportation levy in twenty twenty two in this, in this group. I think, I think the intent, so little discussion. The intent is the board feels strongly that we need to do this over the long term. I, I think from the amount of data and the amount of discussion we've had, it's pretty clear we're not ready to do it in twenty twenty two. And we're not ready to take the community along with us to do this in twenty twenty two. But we, we want to reserve their, their right to do it in the future and build up support with the community to do such a thing. So I, I actually like to make that motion now to not do a twenty twenty two transportation levy.
I'm, I will second. And typically, I totally agree with you. I think in this case, it's a little bit different because it's kind of expected that we renew a levy when it's coming up. So only for that reason, I, I totally get your point. You get, you do a motion when you're asking for something. But, but this is just for transparency and clear direction to our, our leadership team. I just want to comment, I think, you know, I'm really glad that we have the conversations too. I'm really excited about moving forward with, with more conversations about converting to EV and what that might take. I think it's very, I, I think the benefits of not, frankly, we don't need to replace diesel buses right now. So why would we ask our community to pay for them when we don't need that? I think my vote to not go forward with the transportation levy is directly related to the fact that the board is committed to working on a plan similar to the facilities master plan to look at the alternative transportation options such as electric buses and converting to those. So I, I think, you know, it's not a ton of money. I think it's probably our lowest number by far levy wise for our community. But we know that, I think that we need to be, continue to be fiscally responsible, understanding that people are on limited incomes and fixed incomes. And any place that we can find savings, I think we should, I, I think it's the responsible thing to do. So that, that's, those, those are my feelings. I just wanted to have, since, since most of our discussions, since all of our discussions were in study session, I just wanted to put my reasons as part of the discussion.
As a question, Superintendent Klosky, if you're not comfortable answering this or are able to, I totally understand. Given the, this goes to Ty and the administration as well. Given the discussions that we've had and the timing of the aging diesel fleet, which is a couple of years after we replaced that, what would be a reasonable time to expect to run a transportation levy? Like generally, to put together a long range transportation plan and to potentially run this levy?
So I'll respond to the long range transportation plan. Ty and I and Tony and Patrick Rock and Brandy have talked about that. And we think that that is something that staff could bring to the board before the end of the school year, that we have to work in partnership with the city. And we know that a component of that plan will be the city plan as well. So we, we do believe we could bring something that would really plan out and would lay out the depreciation, so to speak, of the buses. As a recommendation to win a levy, I'm going to defer to Ty and see what his thoughts on that are.
Historically, levies turn out best, get the best voting results when they're run in February. Realistically, I agree, Superintendent Klosky, about when we can have the plan done. We could have that done by the end of this, the school year, which would potentially put us somewhere and as early on the ballot as November. That is a midterm election. And when you start having crowded ballots, things kind of get lost. So I would, my presumption would be that we would probably go out. It would probably be best for us to go out the following February, which would put us out for collections two years.
Is that when the city parks levy is going out or expected to go out, the February of twenty twenty three?
It satisfies my question.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Yeah.
If I can do my part, just real quick, it needs to offer a friendly amendment to the motion. To add, tack on to the end of it, to, to not put forward a levy at this time, but to direct the superintendent to put together a transportation improvement plan by the end of the twenty one, twenty two school year, with the intent of passing a levy in the future, in the future. For in twenty twenty three. Does that make sense? Because, because now we have that we're not going to do this. But the action is to go move forward with that plan investment to have it ready.
Is that a friendly amendment to you, David?
It is. I would, I would extend that though to think perhaps that maybe the next step for the board is to work on a sustainability resolution. We, we, part two, we did one previously. We could do another sustainability resolution that builds upon that to think about, you know, both doing a future long range transportation plan, doing a future ballot, as well as our commitment to EVs, as well, thinking about postponing the, the replacement of the four buses that are coming up in the next three years. So I think it's a, it's a little bit more of a work project than a, a similar amendment onto this. That would be my concern.
Yeah, my goal in doing it is that we're actually directing the superintendent. As a body, the five of us are directing the superintendent to move forward with this. So it is, this is moving the district forward in a plan for electric buses, which I think is from what we are from the community, minus the community is really what they want to see is actually moving forward, which has not happened yet.
Just as a point of information, we are also planning on going out to the community via Thought Exchange to ask about how important electric buses are to them. So we're continuing to, to do some work on that ourselves. I would suggest that we keep a new, I'm happy to do a new sustainability resolution, but I would say to keep it separate from this and to maybe do it in the spring when we know a little more and there's a little bit more information as them put together. And, and I would actually suggest that we also, as the district is considering kind of, you know, building plans and capital plans, like to, we may want to address more than just electric buses, you know, or not. That's, you know, open for discussion, but I would suggest postponing it till spring. So we have a motion to, someone wants me to say it again. The motion is to not go out with a levy in February twenty twenty two for transportation, but instead to, and I'm paraphrasing here, however they said it before is correct. Instead to, the board is directing the superintendent to ask the staff to produce a long range transportation plan by the end of the school year, by the end of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year.
I will second that.
I mean, I'm pronouncing that. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of us saying aye. We have no ayes. We have no abstentions. That passes the vote of five to zero. That, that was an aye, correct, Tam? Yeah, that was a thumbs up. Okay. It was kind of like a thumbs up, forty five degrees, but. Thank you very much. And I would like to call a break for five minutes because we, the group of us have been going since four o'clock today. Thank you very much and we'll be back in five minutes. It is now eight oh four. We'll be back at eight oh nine.
Yes, please, was not the, that's word.
That's fine. I didn't want to. Oh, yeah. But, you know.
I, I didn't want to.
Thank you for treating that guy. Yeah. I'm not sure if that's, that's the only thing on that A. So I'm always tempted to sound when you go, okay.
No, 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 all good. So I can just run this like a normal zoom right down. So I've got it. Yep. Go back to that word. Go back to the, the, if you'd like, or you can. You're not this. Perfect.
There she is.
There we go.
Okay, sorry about that.
Back to what happens in a small district, the leadership teams become general in everything. All aspects of each other's job.
Okay, sorry, picking up again, um, item E, Board Policy one thousand and one, government's commitment superintendent succession. Um, this is listed for action and discussion, but as I was saying, I don't think we'll be taking any action today. I did want to, um, give the update that we are getting ready to, um, to start the thought exchange process. And, and have produced a question via thought exchange, like a, um, with a lot of like intro kind of context. Um, and I, I am wondering if we, uh, superintendent Kloski, if we know yet in terms about a timeline for that question going out. That's up to you. So, thank you, um, would we like to do that ASAP? Would we like, I can't imagine any reason why we would wait and the more input, the better and earlier we can respond to it better and factor into our thinking. So, yeah, I'm seeing, that's not.
Do we need a motion to do that?
I don't know, do we? I.
I, I want, we go forward with the thought exchange question to the community, um, as presented.
So as soon as possible. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of going ahead and with the thought exchange, the beginning of the thought exchange interaction with the community, um, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. No nays, no abstentions, that passes by vote five to zero.
You've cut off discussion too quick, I just wanted.
Oh, sorry.
President and vice president for, and Craig or communications director for working on that. I know that lots of little tasks add up to a lot of time, so thank you.
You were very welcome. Um, well, I'm really personally looking forward to seeing how the thought exchange process works from, from this side of it, so, uh, I'm looking forward to it. Ryan, yeah.
May I, Miss, but did you quickly just overview how we came about that question and?
So that, that question was drafted, um, via, after, after input from the board during our study sessions. And some, some input from the thought exchange, thought exchange folks who do this all the time, like have worked on many superintendent searches. Um, and then David and I drafted something, um, together with Craig and then the board had a chance to review it. So, um, should I read it? I have it, I can.
I know, I read it too, is it not on the agenda?
I don't think it's attached to the agenda, I don't think I saw it, so why don't I read it?
Yeah, I think we need to attach it or, or can we?
We can attach it to the minute. Okay, that's fine, and then I guess you can see it. When they, uh. Actually printed maybe. Uh, any other update, reminder to keep checking the superintendent search page on the district website. For updates of what, what discussions have happened, what meetings have happened, if any actions have been taken in public meetings. That page is very easily accessible, it is the last item on the red bar at the top of the district website. It says superintendent search, something like that, um, and that gets updated after every meeting. I can't think of anything else, yeah.
And folks are able to join us for the meetings and observe it, please.
Oh, for sure, yes, yes, and the, the, the meetings on the superintendent's search page are characterized as to whether they're the full board of public meetings. Or, um, study sessions, which are also open to the public, uh, although they're not recorded, so you should watch them. And so far, almost no one is strongly encouraged, if you're interested in the process, to, uh, get involved and watch some of these meetings. Um, and then there's also executive sessions, which are not. Uh, on this topic, so thank you all. Okay, next we have for full governance process monitoring, Board Policy eighteen hundred O E five staff evaluation and instructional practices. Level one and partially level two.
Thank you, Jamie Prescott and I are here this evening. Um, I may need to promote Jamie here just in a moment, but, um. You do have a combination of level one and level two, the level two is attached to item two. And so we've prepared, um, an overview on that one. Um, just making sure that we follow your process, do you want to do what you've done in the back, in the past, is wait till we're all done and then batch approve altogether? Okay, um, so give me just a moment to, back here and. And so Director Prescott should be coming in. All right, Jamie, thank you. Um, so we want to talk a little bit about, uh, section two, this is, uh, an interest of the board. Uh, to take a little closer examination at how our instructional team, uh, works together with all of our educators. Uh, to provide feedback and, and, um, conduct the evaluation process. Um, I'm going to start it off just a little bit, uh, with respect to the impacts of COVID nineteen on the process. And then we can talk a little bit, um, about what this year is looking like so far. So going back, if you recall, um, for the nineteen, twenty school year, um, there were some emergency rules put into place. And that was part of last year's, um, uh, report to you. And essentially there was a truncated, um, um, uh, timeline. And it kind of asked principals and evaluators to look at all the evidence up until the pandemic. And then, um, have formal meetings with teachers, with other educators, and really make the best guess as to where we left off. And how the, and how the, uh, staff member was performing. When we started off last year, um, they continued a modified portion of that. And if you recall, underneath the TPEP, which is the Teacher Principal Evaluation Program. Uh, there are eight different criterion that our educators are, are evaluated in. And if you're on a comprehensive cycle, that means you're being evaluated in all eight areas. And if you're in a focus cycle, that means you're focusing on just one of them. So last year, what they, what, um, OSPI and the State Board of Ed did is they said, um, if you're uncomprehensive. Because of the unique nature of what the school year would look like, um, uh, a comprehensive is actually focusing in on fewer. It's more like a focused, um, evaluation, if you will. That was just an acknowledgement of the many different models of education going on across the state. Um, and so, um, I just talking, uh, maybe turn it over to you, Jamie. If you want to just talk a little bit about the evaluation, um, process last year, um, and any, and, and the findings. And then we can go into what this year is going to look like.
Sure, so last year, um, we tried to provide as much flexibility as possible as far as, um. What would normally have been formal observations in classrooms with staff where a principal would go into a teacher's classroom and observe them. They would meet beforehand, they would meet afterwards, um, and really talk about it this way. Um, or last year, we, we took things like asynchronous videos or a teacher or a evaluator could be invited into a Zoom meeting. Um, it could also be work in a PLC, so there were lots of ways in which we, um, provided opportunities for staff to be observed. Um, that were different than we've, we've done in the past, um, just trying to be flexible and adaptable based on, um, the current situation. Um, if you look at the quantitative report, you'll see the number of teachers, uh, we typically only report on comprehensive cycle and focus cycle. Um, this year will be an anomaly, uh, because of the modified cycle. And so you can see the total number of staff who were on a modified cycle, who would have been comprehensive. But because of the pandemic and the ability to, um, be a little more flexible, they selected just two areas to focus on last year. Um, through that exception, however, this year we are, um, back to our traditional, um, evaluation process. So it's either comprehensive or focused this year.
I think one of the, um, one of the hopes out of this is that we might have thought about evaluations in a different way from a state perspective. And I think maybe that will come about over time, I don't know if there was enough time for adequate reflection. Um, but really thinking about what's the core purpose of, of an evaluation? And for us, it's always been about instructional improvement. And as you've even used tonight in some of the terms, continuous quality improvement in the classroom. Um, the overall process, I would say, is very, um, um, it's, it's very in-depth. Uh, it's very time consuming and then went some ways cumbersome, just given the number of, um, different, uh, staff members. That our principals are evaluating, um, in their schools. So I think one thing that we did learn is, is as Jamie just pointed out, there's more ways to think about observing, teaching and learning. Than just going to a classroom. There are meetings, there are professional learning communities, there are discussions and, and evidence and artifacts of how we're interacting with our, um, parents. How we're interacting with, with students. And so if there's one thing that I think it did open it up is that we can be much more creative in how we're providing the feedback, you know, what we're observing. Um, to, to provide feedback on it. So I think that will hopefully be a change for the better, um, rather than what has kind of been very traditional. I have to see you in the classroom with the students for X amount of time during the school year. So maybe the authenticity of the process will be a benefit, um, long term as we go forward. But as Jamie said, this year, they essentially just turned the, turned the faucet back on and said, everyone, we're back to, uh, the pre-pandemic, uh, observation cycles. Uh, all of the evaluations, all the reporting, um, which, uh, you know, is going to continue to be a challenge. Because we have to think about what's the return on investment? Where are we going to put our time in our teachers and our, um, school psychologists and our coaches, um, our principals? They're all putting in a lot of time into something that we want to make sure is valuable and actually moves the needle and helps us all to improve. So, um, we'll continue to, uh, try to improve our systems and process, but that's a snapshot into, um, the trials and tribulations of evaluating during a pandemic. So I'll take questions.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it, it's very challenging. And these are one of the times we get to appreciate our associate principals in, in a very big way. So, uh, thank you very much for the, the new hires we, we've made as well in that space to make sure our principals can get their job done. And make sure all our teachers are evaluated too, so this is super challenging. I, I, I also think as we think about universal design for learning and how that's being implemented. How do we think about that into our evaluation process in the future too? And, you know, as we're thinking about metrics and all that, perhaps there is something to come to this as well. But, uh, I appreciate all the challenges during COVID and extending grace as, as Deborah's. Or points out is super, super important for us, our students and our staff, so thank you.
One of the, the, that makes me think, Director, as Susan, you know, one of the hallmarks of universally designed classrooms and learning is, um, becoming expert learners. And for not just, um, teachers becoming expert learners about other students, but students being expert learners about their own learning. And that really gets into what Charlotte Danielson and her rubrics and those are the rubrics to use, gets into distinguished teaching. Because in distinguished teaching, it really turns. And, 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 um, and in a way that allows students as they're progressing through. So I think there's some great opportunity and some overlaps. And, um, CAST, which is, um, one of the, um, leading organizations in UDL, they've actually done a crosswalk with the Danielson rubrics. And so you can see, when did I just steal your thunder? Superintendent Kloski, I mean, I was about to turn it over to Superintendent Kloski, so she did that. But anyway, so, so they've done a crosswalk, so you can see where university design classrooms, um, already mesh with the rubrics that we have.
I, I guess I, I had a question too about that when I was reading this, I was thinking, um, I saw that there were different categories for teachers who've been, um, assigned to a new. You know, a new, new level or new subject or whatever. And I was thinking, as our classrooms change and as, as how we instruct kids changes, is there a tipping point at which someone is considered to be basically teaching like a completely new thing? Because of the changes that, that we're going through, you know? That's sort of a philosophical question, you don't really take that straight.
I will say with the crosswalk, though, we actually were studying and using that with our instructional leadership team pre-pandemic, I think. Because I remember us all being in the room together, so I know it was pre-pandemic that we were already looking at that tool. As we were having our discussions about how UDL really did align with those distinguished teaching practices. And how well it did, um, jigsaw, so to speak, with the Danielson model, which is the model we use.
I just have a more practical question, um, I see on here, like, for example, West Mercer has Euro comprehensive reviews this year. And Island Park has, you know, thirteen, not to mention the high school, but, you know, there's more staff there. Uh, I'm just wondering how that impacts those principles or quotes and how that could happen.
Well, um, Jamie jumped in as well, um, I'll start off as how it can happen is just where you are and new staff members coming in. Or it's on a rotating basis, so, uh, so there'll be a future year when Island Park's going to be heavily impacted because it's on a four-year rotating cycle. And so it's just, it's probably more along those, Jamie, did you have other thoughts?
Yeah, just also keep in mind that last year, um, we had our principal at Lake Ridge was out for a period of time. And, um, Jill Kelly, who was the associate principal at West Mercer, moved to interim at Lake Ridge. And so, um, in doing so, that left Carol Best, the principal at West, um, as the evaluator for that building. And so Jill had all of Lake Ridge and Carol had all of West. And so, um, they may have opted to modify some people who were uncomprehensive to focus just for sheer volume of evaluations at West Mercer.
That's helpful, actually. I just wanted to say that when I'm looking at someone sitting to my left, it looks on Zoom like I'm rolling my eyes and I, I'm not rolling my eyes at any of you, I promise. And I have not been, but I keep catching myself. Okay, um, any other comments or questions? Okay. Uh, can I motion?
Remove, we find the superintendent in compliance of O E five staff evaluation and instructional practices. Second.
All in favor of finding the superintendent in compliance, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. No nays, no abstentions, that passes by vote five to zero. The next one is just a language review, yeah, um, post-monitoring language review, Board Policy eighteen hundred O E four staff compensation. Should we read it? Or if no one has anything to, no, I'm seeing a lot of shaking heads, no. Doesn't look like Tim wants to say anything, I know, so, um, this is just for discussion, so no one has any comments? Okay, we'll move on from now. Uh, next we have the consent agenda.
Can we move, we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No nays, no abstentions, that passes by vote five to zero. That takes us to superintendent's announcement.
Couple of announcements, um, we're still watching and I don't believe they've come yet, but I anticipate they should be coming next week. The P S E F D salad for. The PSEFD ballot for the board directors for their regional is voted on by local board directors. So each of you is going to receive a ballot and I strongly encourage you to, um, utilize your right to vote and return those ballots back to the system. Also, super excited this year on our calendar, and we're going to be able to do it. Our site visits, our special meeting site visits, I just wanted to remind the board of these and make sure that they are on your calendar as well. The first one is coming up in October, it's about a month from now, on October twenty-first. That started at eight thirty at Northwood, this cycle that will be Northwood, the middle school and the high school. So we'll be at Northwood at eight thirty. And then on December sixteenth at seven fifteen, we will be at Mercer Island High School for that school site visit and special meeting. And then the final one will, is, has actually a script there. Sure, December sixteenth at seven fifteen, we normally go through the morning, so it'll be public till about eleven. That's at Mercer Island High School. And then on one zero zero eight, as Michelle and I were working through all these dates, there is an error and we're going to describe there, we're going to correct it. Because it currently says March eighteenth, which is a Friday, which we normally don't do, and it's also a non-student day. So I'm thinking you don't want to visit on a non-student day. So the, um, I think your middle school visit will be on March seventeenth, um, from seven thirty and starting at seven thirty. So I just wanted to make sure you all have those marked on your calendars so that, um, we will have those special meetings. And I believe that's all I have.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you for that. Uh, word announcements, inquiries and reports. Tam, do you have any update for us? Is our led rep?
So, um, it has, like I mentioned earlier, I think at the last board meeting, it has been rescheduled for last meeting for, uh, October twenty-ninth and October twenty-thirtieth. Unfortunately, I can only attend one of those meeting, of those days. But Brian, I've talked to Brian and he has graciously offered to cover for me when, on the day, on which is the thirtieth, that I can't be there. Uh, but I'm working on, um, sending out another survey to, uh, to you all. It's almost completed, so expect something this week, uh, for it to come out. And if you guys can fill it out, then I can, um, the next time we meet at the next board meeting on the fourteenth. Then we can, uh, start to look at our answers. And prioritize, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, order of words?
Um, some fun stuff, but since we last met, um, attending the COVID networking calls through Worcester. Some interesting conversations today, there was some polls that they were conducting, two groups were conducting around staffing and vaccinations and what we're expecting turnover rates. So it'll be interesting to see how those results come out and the information across the state. Cause we know that districts are experiencing this all very differently as we approach that cutout date to be fully vaccinated in order to be employed within, um, schools. And it's going to be really impactful to some school districts. Um, going back to September sixteenth, networking call, um, section two G. The professional educator standards board currently has put out a survey. It's up to you for feedback on the draft of the cultural competency and diversity, equity, inclusion standards for school employees. It's, it was a pretty fast survey. I know you like to timeframe your surveys, it took me about ten minutes.
I did it.
Oh, you did it.
Thanks a lot.
If you've not had a chance to do that yet, the link is in that, um, September sixteenth meeting, or I'm sure that you could be led to it from, uh, the other way. But I encourage you to, to respond to that survey for my feedback in there. Um, I did attend the diligent twenty twenty-one modern governance summit. That was a two-day event, covered eight hours over two days. And there was some really interesting material in there. So diligent is the parent company that runs Board Docs, where we run all of our board things. And they have a whole suite of things that they use. But, uh, they, the theme was leading with purpose, changing organizational culture was one of the, the main. Keynotes that was in their trends and evolutions in virtual governance, that security and artificial intelligence, um, making global impact, speaking truth to power, which is really great. And, yeah, some really great discussions in that one. Um, some others, technology that enhanced ethical outcomes for the community, which is really great. And a great quote that I quote from that, the student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. AJ Carville from Great City Schools said that, I thought that was awesome. Um, my point in bringing this out is, um, that as an attendee for this, I have access to all of the breakout sessions and keynotes and everything. So if you're interested, we'd be happy to share those with you, there's some really great insight in that. See, the last ledger learned, which everyone is, uh, able to go to if you'd like, was on, um, general assembly orientation. This amendment window is open now for the amendments. We proposed, the federal relations network has proposed an amendment to ask for a federal funding. Um, and the formulas used for federal funding in emergency situations. Um, so we're removing ESR and S S from that and speaking more broadly to any funds that come from the federal government as a, as it relates to any future emergency. Which is interesting. Um, so with that, the, I was at the federal relations network caucus meeting. We covered all of the things and we came up with that particular amendment that's moving through. I did attend the mastery-based learning grant info webinar from the state board of education. So much like the inclusionary practices grant that we're currently participating in as a district. This is one for, um, districts for mastery-based learning, uh, which we're already doing a lot of in the district. I talked to Superintendent Kloski afterwards and the district is not seeking that grant out at this time, um, because they have a handsful of the inclusionary practices grant and so forth. But really interesting information, I got some fun stuff that came off of that, or you can go to the school board, uh, state board of education website. To get more information on that particular one there and answer questions. Um, and then we continue to work, uh, with our Eastside King Henry group on Fridays. Um, this last Friday was really, for us, a calibration session for the, you know, all ten of us could be there. But we were really leaned into kind of what's happening regionally around testing, uh, climates in our schools during the opening weekends, what's happening where lunches, remote learning options, effective governance, uh, in time critical work. We kind of compared data dashboards and leaned into where we're looking for advocacy. And so the group, I think, has tended to look at emergency funding tied to the prototype funding and title scaffolding, uh, as well as ESR three funding. Um, how that's, that needs to be released from the state down to the districts. And so we're going to begin applying pressure in that area. And then the state per district per student average for ESR, one, two and three was three thousand two hundred dollars per student. So across the state, kind of averaged that, everyone across the board, that three thousand two hundred per student, which I have a school district received less than two hundred and seventy per student. So that should tell you where we are in the ESR funding. So that work continues. And, uh, Director Rory, I know, has been doing some work on the side as well, talking with, um, some of our state representatives and stuff about some upcoming advocacy and work around funding and stuff, which is pretty exciting. So, um, that's what I've been up to.
Thank you.
I just wanted to announce the last weekend, I attended the Mercer Island High School club of nineteen ninety third first reunion. Uh, it was small but mighty. Some people came in from out of town, we have a ton of local people and a ton of very, very local people, like still on the island. Um, but it was fun and it's, it's just, it's just another example of small communities, um, and being able to see people and catch up. You know, it's a different tone than Facebook where so many of us are connected, um, and you kind of get like the, what are you doing? But to really be able to connect with everyone, um, like I said, it was small but mighty because of COVID, but, uh, um, but, uh, but it was pretty fun. So thanks to all those who planned it and attended and I'm sure we'll get a better showing numbers-wise next time.
I have a few quick items. Um, one is that, uh, on Monday evening, I attended the first meeting of the PTA DEI committee. Um, which I joined, which I got onto last spring and it just was sort of starting to get rolling. And, um, so this meeting was just kind of a start of the year, setting some context, getting people into different roles. Was great to see so many people turn out for it, it was outdoors. I think the rest of the meetings this year will be via Zoom. And, um, but I did hear from Julie Obata, who represents the high school on that committee. Um, just a whole bunch of exciting stuff that's going on at Mercer Island High School related to equity work and like student groups working together. And, um, there's kind of this coalition of like eleven student groups that are now all working together at the high school and the middle school combined. So not just score and just IMS, but like a whole bunch of other groups, which is very exciting. And, um, she also talked about a bunch of sort of equity initiatives on the part of, um, of the high school administration. So I look forward to hearing more about that as the year progresses. And I encourage her to encourage the student groups to keep our school board, student reps updated on what they're up to so that they can kind of report to us. So that was great, that was a really great meeting. Um, uh, the other thing is that yesterday, um, I had, uh, Superintendent Kloski and I had a meeting with, um, Mayor Benson Wong and with the city manager, um, Jesse Fong. And, um, we talked about, um, our kind of sprinkling pitch meeting and kind of what needs to happen in and around that. And, um, the, the district slash city agreement and, um, the superintendent advisories. And also talked a little bit about transportation, I was just kind of bringing up to speed on the discussions that we've been having. And there was some discussion of how to best coordinate kind of between the school districts, transportation planning and the city's transportation planning. So there's a lot of kind of shared information and shared planning that has to happen. So that was a great and fruitful conversation and they won't kind of be involved in the loop about anything else that, that we're doing along those lines. So that was good. Um, that's all I've got on this. Oh, no, 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 yeah, that's, but that's, that's the next thing. That's not my personal board report. Are you kidding me? I have a whole system set up for this. Okay, so that's the end of personal board reports and list. Sorry.
I don't know if Tam had more.
Tam, do you have anything personal, like separate from the Trump stuff? Okay, so.
Before you enter into what I just noticed, I'm sorry, I didn't know that sooner, uh, the inclusive practices group, I thought we were going to talk about rotating that. I'm happy if you don't, but.
Oh, it's not on the list, is what you're saying?
Yeah, put that on the list.
Okay.
We didn't include it on the list. Um, it was initially that there needed to be a, a board representative there, they haven't been as stringent with that. And to be honest, we don't have the actual set meetings for it. So we can certainly bring that, um, information forward. We do believe that, um, they will be on in the Zoom setting.
Okay, so I also added a few things on here to try and distribute the work equitably because I realized that other things weren't on here. So for example, the PTA DEI spot was not on here and legislative representative was not on here. And then beside directors meetings were not on here. In addition, um, serving as a board officer was not on here. So if you add those things, um, you get fifteen, which is really nice to invite everyone doing three. And then if you add any practices, someone has to do four. So, um, so, so that being said, um, my schedule is going to be changing throughout this year. So unfortunately, in January, I might have to switch one of my, um, one of my positions here. So trade with me if necessary. Um, but for now, uh, why don't we go through just school by school and, well, how should we do it? We can either go, I have a whole grid here that I'm trying to fill out. So the question is, do you want to just go school by school and people sort of say which ones work for them? Or do you want to go person by person?
Maggie Tyne? Just for a favor. I looked at all of these things and there are things I can't do because I'm teaching at the same time. And so if it doesn't, uh, is too much on anyone, if I can identify times I can attend. Because there are times I just, I can't.
Let's do that. Why don't we start with that, Tam? Which ones can you do?
I can do Tuesday, four to five, uh, with Island, uh, Island Park Elementary.
So Island Park, yeah, just tell me the name of the school.
Island Park and then West Mercer. And then, um. May. And then Islander Middle School.
Okay.
And even with those, I would probably have to attend through Zoom, but those are the, but all the other times I am teaching.
You're mostly probably going to be through Zoom, a lot of them are at least this year. Why don't we do the same thing for everybody else? Can you tell me which ones you could attend of the, the ones that were listed on the list? This is like doing a Sudoku, this is a perfect Sudoku where you pencil in the numbers.
The only one that could potentially, um, cause a conflict for me is the, uh, West Mercer Elementary. That could be resolved easily, but that's the only one that could.
Okay. There, there is also a conflict for all of us, which is that some of those Tuesday meetings, um, both, I think, uh, two of the elementary school meetings, I think, um. No, sorry, IMS and Island Park conflict with our Tuesday afternoon sort of, um, study sessions that we have been. But I think the easiest thing is to just study session because it, those meetings happen on the same day and it's only once a month. So let's just skip that, that week for study sessions and then if we need a study session that week, we'll schedule it for other time. So, um, David, which schools could you do?
I'm flexible.
Okay, Deborah, are there any schools that you can't do or?
For now, since I'm still working at home, I can make anything work. That, that might, well, hopefully it will shift one day, but I don't see that happening anytime soon, so.
Okay, great. So, um, looking at my little like Sudoku grid thing here, um, we have, Tam, is it, Tam can, can do Island Park? So let's just assign Tam to Island Park. Um, I can do Lakewood or Mercer Island High School. Um, everyone else is flexible. So at this point, if you would like to claim a school, if you'd like to continue on a committee that you've been on, or if you want to get around to a different school that you haven't, don't part of the path before. Yep.
I have never, um, worked with West Mercer, I would like to do that.
But Deborah, I'm with Mercer. Um, and Deborah, you're, you're still going to keep doing the Eastside Directors Group, correct?
Yeah, yeah, there was, yeah, others talk, even though it was originally set up as the president and the led rep from each board. And then there was the talks and it's a cohesive unit and, and everyone's changing those positions to just continue with this group. And we're actually presenting at the, um, the Worcester Conference.
Yeah.
About this type of thing, so hopefully there'll be some more set up too.
Okay, great. Um. David, do you want to pick a school?
Um, the middle or high school?
Sure. Um, Tam can do the middle school, so I'm going to make it Tam the middle school because that's one of the few that she can do. So I'll give you the high school. And I'll break this all up later. So don't get confused. Um, okay, Brian, you, that leads you with either Lakewood or Northwood. I, I would ask to do Northwood just because I went on Lakewood last year and I'd like to get to know those folks.
Not one, not one, two years in a row, so.
Okay, so now we've got. Okay, so we've got Island Park done, Lakewood done, got Northwood done, got West Mercer done, IMS. And I just, okay, who is going to, um, be represented to the PTA council? And it just, just to be clear, Tam, you and I are already full, so you don't need to volunteer for anything else at this point. Look back.
I'm happy to do that, I haven't done it in a while.
Great. Okay, Deborah doing PTA council. Um, we've got just a few left here, we've got, um, superintendent's community advisory committee, we've got superintendent's equity advisory committee and the superintendent's teaching and learning advisory.
I can do the community advisory committee.
Great. It, uh, it is, um, you are full now, David, also. Um, so we've got equity advisory and teaching and learning advisory between Brian and Deborah. So we've got equity advisory and teaching and learning advisory between Brian and Deborah.
I have a role about the equity advisory. I thought we were going to put the vice president in the equity advisory.
Right. I thought we were doing equity advisory slash DEI for the vice president. But then we changed officers, so that kind of threw a kink in that.
And I don't need all the equity. Well, I don't mind doing, I I can do the equity advisory committee. That's so along with that. Yeah.
You'll do the
Then Brian's doing teaching and learning.
Happy to.
And Deborah, you're going to stay on the inclusive practices.
Yeah, I mean, really, the first year we had more meetings, well, and I was involved in. And then there's not as many at that time.
And that covers everything. All those years. Great. That's all we've got. So his points are. I would need permission to adjourn. All in favor of adjourning this time meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. No nays, no abstentions, that passes by a vote of five to zero. We are done at eight fifty one PM.